It is six o'clock and I would like to welcome you to the Thursday, December 7th, 2023, Glen County Board of Commissioners meetings. And I have asked this evening, a little out of sequence, but I've asked our county, Assistant County Manager John Gentry to lead us in our invocation tonight, and I've asked our Chief of Police Scott Ebner to lead us in our pledge. So if you would stand with me, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal, and I think it's very fitting that we recognize tonight as the beginning of Hanukkah for our Jewish friends and fellow countrymen that are both here as well as serving in the IDF today. So let us pray. Dear Lord, we do thank you and come to you, and we thank you for the great opportunities that you have provided each and every one of us here in Glen County as both friends and neighbors and fellow citizens, dear Lord, and just pray for the business of our community tonight. We pray for the commissioners that they make great decisions as we move forward on this agenda, dear Lord, and just pray and lift up not only our fellow countrymen that are Jewish tonight, that are here in the states, but also that are serving in the IDF overseas, dear Lord, and just pray, dear Lord, and lift them up to you, your protection upon them, your protection upon each and every one of us, dear Lord, as we go forward here tonight. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. We want to say thank you to all of you in attendance tonight. Thank you for taking time out of your day and joining us in the business of Glen County. First on our agenda today, we have a good news and good report. We want to recognize tonight Mr. Andrew Harold Moses, known to most in Glen County as Peewee, and he is being recognized tonight for 50 years of service to Glen County Government. Andrew, you and your wife come forward if you would, please. Ms. Moses, you come with him. And Peewee, let me read this proclamation and then we'll come down and present it. It's not but 15 pages, so it won't take too long. By in recognition of Andrew Harold Moses, 50 years of service, whereas Andrew Moses has dedicated five decades of his life to the faithful service of Glen County and its citizens, and whereas his unwavering commitment, steadfastness, and expertise have greatly contributed to the growth and betterment of Glen County. Whereas Andrew Moses has exhibited exceptional professionalism, integrity, and dedication throughout his tenure with the Glen County Board of Commissioners, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Glen County Board of Commissioners, along with the grateful citizens of Glen County, do hereby extend their deepest gratitude to Andrew Moses for his 50 years of exemplary service and is witness thereof today by my signature on this seventh day of December 2023. And Moses told me today that he's got, you know, years left and he plans to serve, and he gave a very moving acceptance today of his awards at the Service Awards. So I'm going to come down and present this, Andrew, and if we can get a microphone, maybe, if you would like to say a few words to him.
Good afternoon. Giving honor to God, who's the head of my life. You know, just like I said, told him today, you know, it's 50 years when you're working on a job to win, you really like, and you like the people that you work for, you know, and you like, you know, the things that you, the job that you do, it's not hard coming to work. I mean, you know, it's pretty easy, you know, and, you know, I thought about, you know, as for what I said today, you know, and, you know, I know, I hate to be saying this, like I tell, I hate to be saying the same things over and over and over, but when you're telling the truth about something, you can't help but say it over and over and over. I like the people I work with, I like the people I work for, and I like what I do. And, you know, I just saw, this afternoon, I said, you know, God had blessed me with a job to win, I can use my talents, you know, my strength, you know, and I just glad I was put in a position to win, I can use all those things, sort of like a person working on a, a couple of people working on a painting or a puzzle or something like that. I'm glad over the 50 years, I was able to put my little bit of two cents in to trying to keep Glen County going. So Board of Commissioners, citizens, and God, I thank all of y'all.
I don't know if Mr. Moses is going to preach in his next career or maybe run for politics. I don't know, but we thank you for your comments. And next, we have the privilege tonight to honor our own Lisa Garganis, and I'd like to read a few words about Ms. Garganis. We generally get to read proclamations to do public acknowledgements and, and just as the one that we did now, or our sports teams, or any kind of programming and staff awards, but tonight we get to celebrate Lisa. We're delighted to announce that our very own Recreation and Parks Director, Ms. Lisa Garganis, was just awarded the, I lost my place, the recipient of the prestigious Mike Daniel Award at the Georgia Recorations and Parks Association Annual Conference in Athens last month. The Mike Daniel Award is a symbol of excellence in the field of recreation and parks. This distinguished accolade is reserved for individuals who have exhibited an unwavering commitment to the highest standards in program. It recognizes professionals who not only excel in their roles, but also demonstrate outstanding leadership in the supervision and implementation of recreation, parks, or leisure programs. Ms. Garganis, with her 34 years of experience in recreation and parks, has not only served Glen County with dedication, but she's also elevated our Recreation and Parks Department to new heights. Under her leadership, our community has witnessed the positive impact of innovative and inclusive recreational programs, and Ms. Garganis has worked tirelessly for the past six years in Glen County, infusing enthusiasm into our teams and programs, leaving an indelible mark in Glen County. In true form, when asked about this award, Ms. Garganis said she is honored, but much more honored when her team was named Recreation and Parks Direct Department of the Year in 2022 by GRPA. That is truly indicative of the personality of Ms. Garganis. Lisa, I know you don't like to be in the spotlight, but come on down, and your dedication and passion for your work have not only earned you this prestigious award, but have also enriched the lives of our community members here in Glen County. We congratulate you on this well-deserved recognition and look forward to the witnessing of continued positive impact of your leadership in Glen County. Congratulations. We'll get down to business.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for general business and pension committee with the exception of anything any commissioner wishes to pull.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Swett, to approve the agenda, the consent agenda for general business and pension. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, so we move to item 12. These are public hearings for land use. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Item number 12 is ZM 5652, Christian Renewal Ministries Rezone. Consider an application to rezone the properties of Christian Renewal Ministries at 4265 Norwood Street Extension. From the Highway Commercial and R91 Family Residential Zoning Districts to the General Commercial Zoning District, Chris Amos, CSEC Inc., Agent for Christian Renewal Ministries. And they are here, and Mr., oh, you're not Mr. Postle. Good evening, Ms. Leaf.
Good evening. Thank you. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this is ZM 5652, Christian Renewal, and this is an existing church and school site. They are planning to do some new buildings on the property and do some master planning, and what they are interested in doing is, the majority of the site is Highway Commercial. There is one portion that is owned R9, but they would like to rezone to General Commercial. The reason for that is General Commercial does offer some more flexibility. There's, they're actually less restrictive than Highway Commercial in a lot of the standards. So setbacks are one area that they're less restrictive, and also for building height. Currently, the Highway Commercial zoning allows a 35-foot-high building. General Commercial can allow up to 60 feet, and with redesigning their sanctuary and church, they would like to have that additional flexibility and height. So that is their proposal this evening. And this is the site, so the bolded area are the parcels, there are multiple parcels on the site. And so the bolded areas are what's subject of this rezone this evening. This is off of Highway 341. This is a survey of the property. And the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing this past Tuesday on December 5th, and they did vote 5-0 with Commissioner, Chair Gibbs and Commissioner Edgy absent that evening. They did recommend approval of this application with the following conditions. Access to parcel 0309168 on Elizabeth Road is restricted to emergency vehicle access only. We did have some members of the public there on Tuesday evening that had concerns about traffic from the school that would be coming along Elizabeth Road, past residential areas, and so they, there were some comments addressing that, so the Planning Commission added that as a suggested condition. And these are your possible motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Amos and his clients are here as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, any comments? All right, seeing none. This is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition to ZM 5652, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Greg Lowe. I own the property up there by the first parcel that they said, where the green is at, and Elizabeth Road is the road we've been on all of my life, and I just want to make sure that it's an access easement, because on the GIS mapping, it's showing that Christian Renewal owns the property, the Elizabeth Road. I don't know how, if they own it, but I need to make sure that I have access to my property on that. So I don't know how it's become, that's on the GIS mapping that they own the Elizabeth Road, but I just need to make sure I have it in writing that I have access to my property.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else that would speak in opposition to ZM 5652? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak in support of ZM 5652, please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Amos with CSEC Incorporated. First, the tax, the Glen County tax map is incorrect. The first thing we did was have a survey done of all of this property, the title, title work has all been done. It shows Elizabeth Road on the tax map, on the Tax Assessor's website, as being part of that parcel, but it is not. So Elizabeth Road's not involved in the rezoning, except for the restriction that was placed on it, or the, the restriction was placed on it for emergency vehicles only. The main reason for this rezoning is to give us some flexibility in site planning for the long-term master plan for the church and the school. There's a large area of grass fields out there that is mostly going to probably be school facilities. We've, we've got some issues with traffic circulation now, in the morning and the afternoon. All of the traffic's coming in off Robarts Road, being able to spread everything out a little bit is going to make that problem more manageable. We will be doing some traffic analysis once we have a site plan to base that traffic analysis on. So the, the building height issue is so that we can go to three floors on the buildings. You can't do three floors with a 35-foot building height, and there is no plan to do anything higher than three floors, but that is, that's what the plan is. And I can answer any other questions you may have, and certainly would ask you to please approve it as presented.
All right, Mr. Amos, if you'll just stand by, and we'll, we'll continue with the public hearing. If you want to have a seat, be available. Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM 5652? To speak in favor?
Patrick Aides. I'm a member of the church and would look for the opportunity for the school to have the opportunity to have three floors. It just seems like a wiser use of the land, and so I'm, I'm just speaking that that would be a great thing to happen for the school, school there as they remodel, the school has grown to the limits and seems like the wisest plan is to go up when new, new facilities are being built, and if we can go to three floors, that would be very helpful in that process, so. And otherwise, I think in doing the, this, this will help with looking in the future to, to the, to the flow of traffic and such as that, I think all this will help with that, that as well, to be, to be able to get this rezoned. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM 5652? To speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Stephanie, can I see motions, please? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 5652 with the following condition, that access to parcel 03-09168 on Elizabeth Road is restricted to emergency vehicle access only.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Was it Mr. Lowe? Did that answer your question?
Just long time ago, access.
Yeah, it, it's public access. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, item number 13, ZM-22-29, formerly ZM 5233, billboard use, parcel 03-27362, consideration of a change of zoning request from R21 Family Residential and M21 Family Residential to Freeway Commercial for the installation of a billboard. If we can have quiet, please. Now start again. ZM 22-29, formerly ZM 5233, billboard use for parcel 03-27362, consideration of a change of zoning request from R21 Family Residential and M21 Family Residential to Freeway Commercial, FC, for the installation of a billboard. The 0.34 acre property is located on Blythe Island, adjacent to Interstate 95, parcel Miranda Music Smith, owner and applicant. Note, at the request of the applicant, this application was previously deferred by the Board of Commissioners on December 15, 2022, to the date uncertain, and we have a clerk's note that public comments received by the board prior to 2:00 PM on 12/7 have been attached as additional support documentation tonight. And Ms. Leaf, word to you.
Great, thank you. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this is ZM 2229. We do have a new software with Community Development, so they're going to see some different case numbers from what we used to have as the formatting. So this project was before you, back in December of 2022, and at that time, the applicant requested for it to be deferred, and so it has been deferred, you know, for almost a year. This last month, the applicant did contact the Community Development Department and asked for this to be placed on the agenda again, so it has been re-noticed for a public hearing this evening. And so this property is located, it's on Blythe Island. It is a, it's a split zoning of R20 and M20. It's kind of a remnant parcel from when I-95 came through. Some of the parcels on the other side of 95 were split by I-95, so there's some, a few remnant parcels on, on this side of Blythe Island, and this is, this is one of them that Ms. Smith owns. So she does have a access easement from Brentwood Circle. She, she does own the entirety of this strip of land that she uses to access this parcel. It does come through the Cameron Place neighborhoods, and so it does give her access, you know, to the public road of Brentwood Circle. And the request is to rezone to Freeway Commercial, and she wanted to specify that for the purpose of the meeting this evening, to be clear that she only wants to have the billboard use as part of the uses, so not, not the other Freeway Commercial uses that are, that are allowed under Freeway Commercial zoning. It would be specific to the billboard use, and that, the request is for that to be the only use that there's, so that there's no concern that there could be other commercial activity on the parcel. So this is I-95 coming right through here, and so this is the parcel, and as you can see, these parcels here were originally part of the lots on the other side of 95, so these are these remnants that I mentioned. This strip of land right here that does go out to Brentwood Circle is her access that I mentioned. And again, here is the property, and this is, shows the surrounding zoning. So she has a split zoning of M20 and R20. The remainder of the property in yellow is all R20. This green over here is Forest Agricultural. This was rezoned to Forest Agriculture in the last couple of years. Ms. Music does own this adjacent parcel that's FA. And here's a survey of the property, that's right here. And this would be the proposed location of the billboard if approved. This applicant did submit some additional maps to show the distance from this parcel to surrounding properties, particularly where the residences are in these properties, so it, so everyone can get a visual for the distance from a residence to what they would, would see on the property if a billboard was placed on the property. So these, the one on the right is a little more zoomed in, that does show the distances, so it's about 900 feet to the residences in this subdivision. And these were some additional submittals from the applicant, so this is on the other side of highway, other side of I-95, this resident, what they would see on this parcel. And from I-95, the circle indicates the proximity of And from I ninety-five, the circle indicates the proximity of where the billboard would be located on her property. And there were some public comment that were received. Additional, I know, was, was submitted to the Board of Commissioners. These were comments that were received by the Community Development Department. So this, this one is opposed to it for residents in Cameron Place, and then the next three are in support of it. And these were all sent to the board as well. So the Mainland Planning Commission, and this was back in December of twenty-twenty-two, they did consider this application, and their vote was six-one with Commissioner Clark, who was on the Mainland Planning Commission at that time, opposed to it, and to, but it was approved or recommended approval as presented. And as I noted, in December of twenty-twenty-two, it came before the board, and these are your possible actions. And both Ms. Smith and her attorney, William Ligon, are here for the application this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, do we have any comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing for ZM dash two-two dash two-nine. Any that wish to speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Benjamin Church. That was my comment that you saw up there on the board. I'm, I live in Cameron Place, and I'm opposed to this. I just don't see how it's not going to lower our property values, or really our quality of life. We're taking housing away from people. We're not going to have as many residential homes in the area. It just doesn't make sense for the character of the community. Nine hundred feet and the raised, the way that ninety-five is raised up, you're going to look right into our neighborhood. It's just not fair. And when I bought this house, I had no anticipation that it could possibly be rezoned to something like this. And really just, I mean, it makes me want to pull up stakes and move, honestly. I've talked to my neighbors. We were all kind of flabbergasted that this thing just popped up. We see a yellow sign, we think, hey, this is just some normal easement change. We have no idea that we're talking billboards in our neighborhood. It's just an unfair, you know, unreasonable zoning change. So I won't take up more of your time, or, you know, I just appreciate the, the time and consideration.
All right, anyone else to speak in opposition to ZM two-two dash two-nine? In opposition? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM two-two dash two-nine, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm William Ligon, and I, I'm here to represent the applicant, Ms. Smith. As you consider this, I'd, I'd really like for you to focus in on and consider the nature of the surrounding property. I mean, this piece of property is sitting right on I ninety-five, which is the busiest thoroughfare in Glen County. In fact, it's probably one of the busiest thoroughfares on the entire East Coast. And every day, there are thousands of cars that go up and down that, that interstate. There are hundreds or more of semi-trucks that are rumbling up and down the, the thoroughfare. And, and that, use of that interstate is only going to continue to grow. If you've been paying attention to any of the economic projections for our coast and for the ports, there's going to be more and more transit along that roadway. And one of the things that you normally expect to see on a roadway like that are billboards for advertising, for commerce. And that's what Ms. Smith wants to use this property for, to advertise her businesses, which she operates here in Glen County. The other property that surrounds this billboard is owned by Mrs. Smith. As, as Leaf previously, previously pointed out, the nearest house is over nine hundred feet away, and that's almost three football fields away from, from this proposed billboard site. It was also noted that this is a remnant part of a lot that was cut off from the usable part of the property when I ninety-five was built. So really, this is not a situation where she is coming in, in and asking to use, to just create a, a different use for this property. This was created when I ninety-five was built. In essence, it was rezoned when I ninety-five was put in, in place and brought all those cars and trucks and, and, and the commerce that travels up and down that interstate to that area. That's the nature and use of this property. You know, this commission is approved throughout this county, other locations for uses as billboards. And this is not, you know, near the entrance of a subdivision. It's not near historic location. It's certainly not in some scenic area that people are going to come in and look at and enjoy and have their views disrupted or obstructed by a billboard. That's not the case at all. This is right on the edge of the busiest interstate on the East Coast. And, you know, it's, it's something that, that the nature of this has been recognized by the Planning Commission. You know, it's been recognized by, by others, some of the neighbors that, that, that sent in their notes saying that they have no objection to this. And so I'm, we're, we're just asking this commission to just recognize where this is, recognize the nature of this property, recognize that it can't be used for any other purpose, recognize that this situation was created when I ninety-five was put in place, recognize that this is a long ways away from any other residents in the area, and also recognize that I believe there are other properties on Blythe Island that don't have billboards, but their zoning would perhaps permit a billboard on Blythe Island. And so I, I think when you think of all of these things, I think that we all know that they're in our hearts, that the right thing to do is to approve this rezon with the conditions that the only thing that could be placed on this property is a billboard. And I want to thank all of you all for just thinking about these things and considering this, and we're asking for your vote to approve this billboard, this rezon for her. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak in support of ZM two-two dash two-nine?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Miranda. I did want to start out by just asking you to approve this request as presented for my billboard-only parcel. I'm not sure who the gentleman is here or where he lives exactly, but I can tell you that the, the access that I have, which is fully wooded, you have to cross wetland to get there, is nineteen hundred feet back. The whole top three acres was left fully wooded buffer. I had asked for that before, and it's twelve-hundred-and-fifty or, or fifteen-fifty down the left-hand side and down. And any of the homes that were pulled off for distance, there are five-hundred-foot density woods between these distances that you looked at. So unless he's crossed my property, there's, there's no way he could see this billboard at all. The only person that can see it is Tracy Goodwin, and, and she was one of the ones that put her concerns in. I have asked for it to be at a limited of thirty-five foot and non-illuminated, non-digital, non-flashing, just a standard pole billboard. That at thirty-five foot max would basically be ten foot above the grade of ninety-five, and this parcel being at, at the bottom is directly, when you come around the curb going north to, going north on ninety-five, it's directly right in front of you. In August two thousand sixteen, I purchased this as my first parcel on Blythe Island. It was landlocked, so I pursued purchasing additional lots from surrounding owners and negotiated to buy all of the parcels together in January of two thousand nineteen, so that I would be able to access it. I have since purchased three others from different owners. The parcels were all wooded and I do, and do not have access to power or utilities, and this one sits with a clear, direct view beside I ninety-five. It is a substandard to current residential building permits. It is nineteen hundred feet from civilization and only accessible by me and no one else. I want you all to know that after repeated unsuccessful requests for five minutes of consultation time, guidance, planning and development by phone or in-person last year, and on the final day of the deadline, I received a notice through the online portal that I must change my application to reflect a zoning that allows billboards. I had not chosen freeway commercial. Although we know the thirty-plus billboards erected throughout the town in the last two years have not all been in freeway commercial, or before either of the Planning Board or the Board of Commissioners for site plan approvals, as they are required on PD text site plans, freeway commercial is the only option I was given with the newer zoning text. Seemingly, I do feel mistreated. Throughout my professional adventures of land development in Glen County, the opportunities to revise to a more comfortable allowable zoning that doesn't conflict with some of the other article sections have passed now, and this is causing an economical loss and a use of my property as I intended before making the purchase decision in two thousand eighteen. I have successfully met with Mr. Raffowski, Mr. Clark, and Ms. Leaf, and a few others now on these matters recently, six weeks ago, I guess, I'd say. And I'm very thankful for the opportunity to move forward. The parcel is only large enough for the sign. I have imposed cosmetic buffers on myself and sound surround to ensure visibility from I ninety-five only, and the billboard would cut noise that already exists. The procedures that I have endured are unlike anyone else's with billboards in the past two years in Glen County. I simply want the same. The county is even in the billboard business now by leasing the drainage right-of-way at Summit, with the three towering well above and beyond, behind the Notting Hill subdivision and Southern Landing Homes, without any public input, no hearings, and the glaring digital structures like that at Chapel Crossing and Highway seventeen, before being installed less than the three-hundred-foot rule, as is the rule for billboards nearby homes. I have many in support, at least five, that I know that were public comments, whether they called or not, I'm not sure, and no homes are within a minimum of six hundred to twelve hundred feet. I'm asking for your approval with a thirty-five-foot height restriction on a non-illuminated, non-digital, non-flashing billboard with no other uses on this parcel. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else to speak in support of ZM two-two, two-nine? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I am the, I'm Commissioner Tosterson. I am the Commissioner for District One, and Blythe Island sits in the middle of my district. I was, I grew up on Blythe Island. I have a number of family members that still live there, and it's my intention and my responsibility to help protect the interest in the citizens and the integrity of Blythe Island, the Blythe Island community. I want to commend Commissioner Clark for his strength. He was the sole voter that voted in opposition of, of this when he was on Mainland Planning Commission, for his strength and, and his foresight in seeing this. We know that what we're calling this now is, is a serious spot zone. You have a residential island, that everything is residential or agricultural, and you're wanting to put a freeway commercial, which is the most intense commercial zoning, in the middle of a residential area. And I am adamantly opposed to that. It is, it's, i- i- if, if this is approved tonight, and I hope it's not, it's going to open the Pandora's Box for other avenues of, of commercial properties that, once, if we say yes to this, we're, we will have to say yes to the other ones as well. And it will open up a door that we won't be able to close. I have spoken with, and I have gotten emails and texts and phone calls from residents of Blythe Island and District One, adamantly opposed to this request. Recently, in the past couple of days, I have, I have received a handful of people that are in favor of it, so I want to make mention of that as well. But at this particular point, there is no freeway commercial on Blythe Island. There is some highway commercial on Highway three oh-three, but it, this is primarily a residential island. It always has been. There's no, there's never been billboards on it, same as St. Simon's Island, same as Jekyll Island. And if we don't protect this, this as it sits, it, it can so easily get out of hand. So I'm asking that, that we, we, if you would consider those, those avenues that we could have a problem with down the road, and I appreciate y'all listening to me over this.
All right, sir. Anyone else have a comment?
Question. First question for the applicant, and either one can ask. Of course, my family and relatives are extensively in the billboard business, and I'm concerned about the appearance of a conflict. Have, anytime they contacted, contacted you, or you had discussions with them about investing or building or leasing or anything on that?
No, sir, not at all. No, sir, not at all. I haven't had anyone approach me, and I would not sell if they did approach me. I have been a business owner. I have an international brand that I have been promoting for twenty-five years. I have seafood family business. We're at Exit forty-nine. They do pack and ship as well. So this is, I, I have been located on three, Highway three forty-one, out near Jessup Highway for fourteen years. My office is not located there now, but it's also not on Blythe Island. There will be no active, commercial activity on Blythe Island at all. And, you know, I, I go back to the point that they made me change this. I mean, if it needs to be highway commercial, all I asked was for some guidance and to say that, that that would satisfy. You know, I know new ordinances are, are moving forward. This particular parcel is unlike any of the others. There are homes all on the other ones. There are homes all on the, I mean, it's substandard. I can't put a well, I can't put a septic. Glen County won't allow dirt roads anymore, so I have sixty-foot wide, but all I can do really is drive on it. I can build on it. And, you know, I, no. But to answer your question, no.
Okay, I appreciate it. Of course, you know, I have to ask that question.
I see them. I see them, put them up, but no.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I, I was on the Planning Commission when this come before us last December, and at the time, there was two billboards being discussed. One of them I was for, and one I was against. One was going to be intrusive to the neighbors. This one I was more or less for. It was at the very bottom corner. We, me and Commissioner Raffowski met with Ms. Smith a couple of weeks ago, whatever it was, and she is correct that due to the new ordinances coming forward, not to her, she had to go this route to get her billboard. Nothing she's done, nothing, it's just a victim of the, the new zoning ordinances. I, this week went out there. I said, well, let me see, I wanted to see where the billboard was going. And very muddy, very wet. We got a lot of rain on Saturday night. Made it there, went out there exactly where it's at. Only house I could see was across ninety-five, the roof pitch of a greenhouse. That was the only house that we could see. One side note, while I was out there, what Ms. Smith has done, has come in there on her edge of her property, down there at the very bottom of the green or gray, and dug a ditch all the way to ninety-five. And she has solved one of our cause problems that we have had over the years, and that was Brentwood Circle. She's got all their water. And I hope in the future, right, right of way down there, and Mr. Commissioner Raffowski knows about it, we can go all the way down there and basically take care about it, we can go all the way down there and basically take care of the mosquito problem on Blath Island at some point. It'll cost us some money, but it's something we need to look at. But back to the billboard, my other concern was, is this thing will be lit up, is it going to be lights on it, up around it, whatever? No. Is it going to be one of these ones that's flashing, changing, you know, we see? No. You know, I can see where Commissioner Tosterson about the precedent, but this piece of property we're talking about, folks, is very, very small. And when William was speaking, he made a great point. When I-95 cut through there, that changed the dynamic of the properties that's right there in that area. So even though I was against two billboards last year, I was in favor of this one and will be in support of it tonight. And I just look at it commonsense-wise, the only people that will see this will be the people coming from Florida on I-95. They'll be the ones that see it coming around the corner. Everyone, it will not impact anyone on Blath Island, it will be not a visual distraction to them at any point. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, and I've got a second. What Commissioner Clark said, I think the only, only people that will actually see this will be on the interstate.
This question might be from Ms. Leaf. Did you say ten feet above the interstate grade? Is that the bottom of the sign, or what's the ten feet above the interstate grade?
Yes, is that what you wanted? I might defer to the applicant to discuss her design plan.
The interstate itself is, is above the twelve-foot fence that you see, and so my expectation at thirty-five foot, which I believe is the height restriction for the area, the zoned height restriction for the area, so, and I think that you have noticed that, so with a thirty-five-foot maximum, there should be about ten feet to the bottom of the sign. Obviously, there are limitations for the DOT for the size of your sign. I think they're normally about twelve-foot tall, so between the ten-foot on the ground, ten-foot, and another twelve-foot, you know, that's less than thirty-five feet above the grade of the ground, unless there's some restriction that they have imposed. I prefer it to be lower profile with a spotlighted background of buffer so that it'll stand out, because it's not competing with the digital signs. It's not, never intended to be any higher than that either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me add to that. If the interstate grade is ten feet, and you're ten-foot lower than the interstate grade.
It's very low. That is the lowest line part.
Then whoever builds billboards are going to, going to build it ten feet higher to start at the interstate grade. So if you're ten feet lower, then that billboard is going to be forty-five feet high from your property.
If my, if I'm standing at, if I'm...
To make the thirty-five-foot grade off of the interstate level. If you're twenty feet lower, it would be sixty-five feet tall.
No, sir.
Yes, it would.
I'm confused on your math.
I checked that out today, because that question came up.
I'm really confused on your math, because the interstate is higher, it's about the, can you show the photo of the interstate?
But if your property is ten feet lower, then you're going to go up ten feet before you even start the thirty-five feet.
Ten, ten-foot above the interstate grade, is that correct?
Thirty-five feet above the grade of the...
Ground.
The interstate, correct.
If there's a ten-foot drop, then potentially...
That's right. So she'll go up ten feet with her sign before she starts her thirty-five feet.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm asking to do. I'm asking for a thirty-five foot. Strictly asking for a thirty-five foot. I've looked at it, and I know...
Any billboard company is going to put the maximum that they can on a billboard.
But that's, I mean, they do what you tell them to do, honestly. Like, a billboard company, I'm not sure if I'm wrong, maybe Mr. Fennig, but they're going to build what you pay for. They're going to build what, you know, what you contract them. You pay more if it's going to be taller. I'm honestly not asking for anything higher than thirty-five feet. The fence is twelve feet, and the road is like right level at that, and I'm not, I'm not advertising to the semi-truck drivers, I'm advertising to people in cars. My age bracket is eighteen to forty-five, and they're driving cars, not semi-trucks. So I don't want it to be taller than the semi-traffic that's on the interstate. But whatever you feel is right by that, I'm not requesting forty-five feet. I'm not. So whether it be from the ground or from the interstate grade.
Well, once it's approved, you can do what you like. We won't have any say-so in the matter.
I want to do what you want me to do, Mr. Tosterson. I honestly do. I want to make everyone happy. I feel like I have done that in everything I've come here for, even with the drainage. Like, you have no idea how much water comes off of the front ditches on all of this property in Cameron Place, and I did that for them, and for three years now, there have been no complaints about it, because I take it on. So I don't mind taking on any amount of work or necessary restriction that you want to impose on me.
Well, I know that my job is, and I'm a big personal property rights commissioner, but I also know that I have to protect the property rights of the neighbors that are around there too, and protect their property.
Yes, sir, and that is really why I wanted you to meet me. In the last six weeks, I've called you four times, and I've asked you, please, to come.
And we have communicated, you and I.
We did communicate, not about this, though.
Well...
But it's okay. I'm really not. I really want to do what you want me to do, and I want, I do want to protect the people. I was an HOA president for six years. My job was to protect my people.
Well, you know, when you...
That is my heart, it really is.
You know, when you originally came to us and you wanted your horse farm there, you made the statement that you did not want any commercial activity. Well, this is commercial activity. So, I mean, you changed gears already.
Honestly, but you didn't meet with me on that, Mr. Tosterson, or you would ideally have known. I did purchase this parcel first, and it is not part of the Farm Ag. I had to buy all of it just to gain the access to this parcel. It was an all or nothing. That's how it was negotiated. And if I had the opportunity to really, yes, we did work together on that through Stephanie. If I had the opportunity to sit down with you then, you really would have known my overall vision, and you would have known I have a donkey that I have to abandon to move my six horses there. So, you know, I just want the communication. You are my commissioner. You are my commissioner. I aim to make you happy, I'm not trying to lie to you, I'm not trying to tell you anything that you want to hear. I want you to have compassion for, honestly, this is the very first parcel that I purchased on Black Island, and I am born and raised there. My family all lives there. I want to be back over there. And, you know, I've, I've done a lot of work, a lot of work in there.
I'm just saying that I know that if this is approved tonight, there's no, there's nothing that says that you can't go down two more parcels and put another billboard up.
I'm happy...
And there's nothing that the county can do about it, because we have already approved a freeway commercial in a residential area, which is spot zoning.
Well, I'm, I am very happy with the one.
Once we say yes to this, we can't say no to another one, and another one, and another one.
Mr. Neal, last time I was here, did ask Aaron Mumford if this was spot zoning, and his answer was no. And I, like I said, if you wanted to tell me right now, tonight, you can have this as highway commercial, because there are other highway commercials that, right now, if they signed, if they filled out a sign permit, they would be allowed to put a billboard, maybe it's a different size, but they are allowed to do that right at the moment on those other highway. If you wanted to say, Miranda, you can have highway commercial, I have no objection to that, because I didn't, I didn't ask for the freeway commercial, honestly. I don't want a spot zone, I'm not asking to. Mr. Mumford confirmed that that was not what it was. I've agreed for you to tell me what height. I just don't want him to come through and put these ten-foot metal barriers, and then you can't see it. I would like to be ten-foot, the bottom of my sign, ten-foot above that pavement. That's what I'm asking for. With the twelve-foot, that's twenty, I mean, to me, I can do it in thirty-five foot. Every way I have calculated it, thirty-five foot from the ground, I can do it, and that's what I'm promising you.
Ms. Lee, can you put the map back up of the, of the red arrow showing? These are light intrusions here. These, these, these red light, these red arrows are showing light intrusion to these homes that are on Blath Island, from your billboard.
Okay, there's a thousand feet, there's twelve-hundred feet, nine-hundred-and-fifty and nine-hundred-and-sixty-four, and that line that you see, that's the county seventy-foot wide, fully wooded forest buffer. And then everything up to where you see the lakes on the south side, that is all, it's woods. It's woods. I, Beau, can you speak to that, of what you witnessed and what you saw? It's, this is woods. The homes are at the front of the property, and that not only is the back of their home, the billboard is facing, facing to the pavement down, not in that direction at all, actually, but, and I don't want to get upset here, because I'm, you know, it's not supposed to be glaring light. Listen, there's no power there. It costs me twenty thousand dollars to get power just to the very top part, and I'm not going to spend thirty-five to bring it all the way down to the bottom. There's no power, there's no well and septic ability. You know, I mean, if I put solar light on it, that's a dim light, there's no light visible from there. And I invited you to come there today, you can come there tomorrow. There's no visibility, I wanted you to really physically see that.
I drive that road every day. I know down at the bottom right corner, that's Hillary Trace down there, there is no tree buffer at all on I-95, that's just a basic fence, and they have no buffer at all, and that billboard would be facing in that direction, because you, because you basically said that's the direction it's going to be.
Well, the Avery Hammock that, I'm sorry, Avery Pollock that sent the message in is one of those homes. One of the letters in support to me, she said, "We have I-95 and semi-trucks in my backyard. What difference does the billboard make?" She trusts me to do what I've told her that I would do as a promise, but the, where you see the red lines, and you see the long seventy-foot buffer that then runs down the interstate, that is all woods. It's the county right-of-way, I can't clear it. It, you can leave it, they're a hundred-foot tall Union Camp pine trees, timberland. It's not visible, there, there's no lighting.
Well, I know that when you get, when you go with heights, you spread your light out. You know, if you're at ground level, and I know the photographs that were taken, I assume you probably, you took those.
I was on the interstate. I stopped on the interstate yesterday.
But you've got a, you've got a, you've got a billboard that is thirty-five foot higher than the level that you took pictures from.
I'm not asking for it to be that, though. That's where you're misunderstanding. I'm not asking for it to be thirty-five foot above the interstate. I'm not. I'm not asking for that.
You're asking for thirty-five feet above grade.
The ground, right. And ten-foot above the grade of the, ten-foot above the pavement of the interstate. All I'm asking for is ten-foot, so that I would be looking at it, like these probably twelve-foot doors. From, you know, from the level of the ground, I mean, most cars are only six-foot tall. They're, all parking garages are seven-foot tall. I'm only asking for ten-foot from the bottom of the sign above the interstate. A parking garage is seven, if that helps.
Well, my job as Commissioner of District One is to protect the larger, the larger number of constituents of that district, and it's overwhelming that they, they don't want this.
Well, the last two, we had two other public hearings for two, actually, there were three or four, MPC for two, there were no objections, no emails written in until yesterday. And there were letters in support that were submitted before those objections. And for the gentleman, I emailed all of you guys earlier, his complaint was that he could see the interstate from his backyard. The photos that I submitted are from me standing on the interstate, looking off, you can't see any homes. The only one is the green, and the next one beside us is Avery. The, I had someone pull to the sidewalk beside Richard Willis's home and take a photo. You cannot see I-95 from behind any of those homes. The Angela Jones, Sarah Jones, that submitted her letter in support, she's two houses up from that, that's on one of the other sides, slides, but there again, like all the way across the interstate, and these are thick woods. I'm just, I promise you, this is not, it's not going to be above that. I understand your job. I feel that I've reached out to you, and you, you, I really deserved for you to hear and see too what I wanted to present you before tonight.
I'm familiar with billboards. We approve them and not approve them all the time. I've got a billboard directly across from the entrance to my subdivision. There's the one...
It's not like those. I promise you that. There's, it wouldn't be, it would not be economically smart for me to go put a hundred-thousand-dollar billboard up that has no lights and power, and it would probably take fifty to get power to it.
They are lit and powered, the ones that are across from my subdivision.
But I don't have, this is nineteen-hundred feet back of rural property with no power. I had to split power with Tracy, and it was eighteen thousand dollars, just to get it up to where I'm going to be building a cabin at the very top.
I'm going to let you have the last word.
I'm, I'm just asking you to, to trust me, and you tell me what you want me to do, but I am not asking for thirty-five feet above the interstate. That is not what I'm asking for. And I'm assuring you that it is not going to be lit, it's not going to be flashing digital lights ever, and if, if you want me to make it highway commercial, sure, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with it being a PD, billboard only, because I, there is no other use, there is no other use. I mean, I've been denied, like, dirt roads, the county doesn't want it to maintain it. I need it. I need it. I'm not an Atlanta developer coming in here that just wants an advertising business. I have been in business for twenty-five years, I have an international brand. I need the billboard, even if it's not lit, you know? I mean, I've tried, honestly, I'm, I'm an honest person. In my heart, I've listened to what everyone has said, and I honestly have tried to do that, even with the Farm Ag zoning, I did that. I left a buffer, they can't see. I feel like that if they could, they would be here. I'm not sure where this gentleman's address is. He says he's new to the neighborhood. You know, I'm, I'm not afraid. I put my phone number out everywhere, and then, you know, I mean, I invite the calls. If someone has, that's just me and how I've always been. I've usually been the leader and the one that's fighting for the people that don't have a voice. And I'm just asking you to, to give me a chance. Put restrictions on it, you know, put the restrictions on it that make you happy, because I'll work around them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any, any other comment? All right, entertaining motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the proposed zoning decision.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker, to oppose the zoning. All in favor of the opposing, raise your right hand. That is four against. Those in favor? Those in favor? Those voting against the denial of... Okay, I'm sorry, I need to clarify. So that, that is four to three. Mr. Attorney, did we clarify that? All right. Item number fourteen, ZV 5649, Chick-fil-A Sign Variance, a request for a variance to the sign regulation outlined in Sections 810-2, which regulates maximum number of signs at seventy. Golden Isles Parkway Plaza, 03-14986. Matthew Foley, Clayton Signs, Inc., agent for Ryan Swinford, Chick-fil-A, Inc., owner. Mr. Carey.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, Commissioners. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a sign variance for Chick-fil-A. Here is the site. Their request is for two additional signs to be placed on the building. The ordinance only allows for three and they have currently been permitted for three signs. Here is the site. The proposal, uh, would have a sign that would be adjacent to Spur Twenty-Five. Currently, there is no signage along, uh, Spur Twenty-Five and also, uh, facing the other parking lot. The signs marked in red are where the current signs are located. And here's a rendering of what the signs would look like. And here are your proposed elevations. Here are your possible motions. I would like to highlight that if you did choose to approve this, the signs would still meet the square footage requirement for the maximum allowed, uh, signage on the lot. It would still be under that five-hundred, uh, requirement.
All right.
And Sarah Black, the owner of the store, is also here tonight.
All right. Uh, before we open the public hearing, uh, Commissioners, any comment? All right, this is a public hearing for ZV five-six-four-nine. Any that wish to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name for the record. Any to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZV five-six-four-nine, please come forward, state your name for the record.
I'm Brandon Guest. I'm with Clayton Signs. Matt Foley is our permit expediter. That's why you have his name. Um, our, our desire is to, is to capture really tourists, as I am, in my five-hour drive here today. I knew where the building was and still didn't really know it was a Chick-fil-A, other than I knew that's where I was going. If you're, if you're coming from ninety-five and the, and the, the Chick-fil-A is on your right, um, that side of the building also faces you, the, the main side. But you can sort of see the little monument. You can see the icon once you get to the, to the intersection, the icon that's above the, the icon being the square sign. That is above the, the drive-through, uh, window, or in this case, sliding door. What we would like to do is have a sign on the side of the building that faces ninety-five and the other side of the building that you would see as you're going, not ninety-five, Golden Isle Parkway, sorry, as you're going northwest on Golden Isle Parkway towards ninety-five, that, that less wide side of the building where the driveway kind of wraps around, um, a, a sign there to capture folks that are, that are looking through that, that tree line. The hope is that they would realize it's there and have time to get in that left turn lane rather than getting down the road and saying, "Oh, man, there's the Chick-fil-A" and swiping over to the left. It would give them much more an opportunity to recognize the Chick-fil-A's there and get in that turn lane in a, uh, in a safe and orderly manner.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of ZV five-six-four-nine? To speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, my grandchildren love Chick-fil-A and they made it a point to let me know it was opening back up. I'd like to see one out at exit twenty-nine. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZV fifty-six-four-nine as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion on the matter? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's six for, those opposed.
Mr. Chairman, based on the conversation we just had previous to this and, and we have, uh, coming back with this right behind it, I, I can't, uh, can't be supportive of this. Everybody knows where Chick-fil-A is. It's in principle, we just denied because of visibility. Previous, uh, I go by Chick-fil-A driving in, it's always crowded, it's easily seen. So honoring our previous applicant and keeping principle with this situation too, is the reason I'm voting no.
All right, that's, uh, six one, uh, six for, one against. We did get the complete vote. All right, so that passes. Thank you. Under general business, uh, this is a matter that concerns me personally, so I will recuse myself and give the gavel to Vice Chairman Rafalski.
Okay. FP dash twenty-three dash sixty-one, formerly FP fifty-six twenty-eight, Autumn Woods, Phase Three-B subdivision final plat, consider a final plat approval for the subdivision of an appro, of approximately thirty-one-acre tract into forty-nine lots and three tracks to named, to be named Autumn Wood, Phase Three-B subdivision. Property is located at Zero Elizabeth Drive, parcel number zero-three-dash-one-eight-six-zero-two, in Zone Plan Development District. Philip Jackson, Jackson Surveying Incorporated, Agent for applicant Wayne Neal, Regency Land Group. Owner, Mrs. Leaf.
Thank you. Stephanie, Planning Manager. Uh, so this, um, this slideshow, um, is a little bit information-heavy. Um, this project did come into compliance this week to be ready for your agenda this evening. So, um, the documentation that is typically in your packet is also on each slide, uh, just so it's clear, um, for the public and for your, for, um, your reference as well. So this is a, um, forty-nine lot and three-tract subdivision that is Phase Three-B and this is off of Highway Ninety-Nine. And, uh, they do have one remaining, um, infrastructure improvement to make, um, for, uh, sewer improvements. And so they have, they are gonna be posting a three-thousand-five-hundred-dollar cash bond to cover that and that'll, um, cover the fix. That amount has been approved by Joint Water and Sewer Commission. And so, um, part of the, the motion, if it is your pleasure to approve this tonight, is to approve it with, um, that bond as well as those right-of-way deeds and, um, utility drainage and access easement as well that, uh, you would be accepting. Uh, so just a copy of the review history that everything is compliant, uh, for this meeting this evening. This is the cost estimate that was, uh, submitted by the applicant's engineer, the thirty-five-hundred, that, um, as I mentioned, is approved by Joint Water. And this is the plat. And then this is a copy of the limited warranty deed. Uh, this is the dedication of the right-of-ways, um, rights-of-way within the Autumn Woods subdivision because they are gonna be public roads. And these also get, um, recorded right after the plat gets recorded. And this is the drainage, access to utilities easement. And these are your possible actions. And the recommend motion is, um, for the Board of Commissioners to approve application FP twenty-three sixty-one, including acceptance and approval of a one-year cash bond in the amount of three-thousand-five-hundred dollars from Regency Land Group, LLC, for the completion of the remaining water and sewer infrastructure improvements and also including acceptance and approval of a limited warranty deed dedicating public rights-of-way and a utilities, drainage and access easement. Thank you.
We have any, um, questions? This is not a public hearing, so.
No, sir, it is not.
Anybody questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, I, I move to approve the request.
Second.
Do we need, do we need to read that in full, Aaron?
No, I don't think you need to read it full, but just the request as recommended by, you know, by staff and the recommended motion. So I think that's what Commissioner Tosterson meant.
Uh, I approve the request, uh, per staff's re, uh, recommendation.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Tostson, a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? We do not. Do we have a need for executive session? No, sir? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn? Second.
Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Booker in sweat, second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.